I'm a cheat.
Yeah.
Oh, I got it. I got it. I'm good.
Just, I'll trade you.
I got the same one. I got it.
That's the motion.
I got it.
The LP gets moved to after energy.
But we're not going to do that now, though, right?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Okay, we're at 15. It's just Michael should start. Good evening. Welcome back. We're back in public session. We're going to go to item number four, which is a public hearing on energy aggregation. I'm going to read this notice of public hearing. Let me do the paper one, Jen, or the one that's on the screen? Either one. I can do either one? Either one. Okay. So in our town meeting on May 7th of 2018, residents of this town voted to authorize the Board of Selectmen, known today as the Select Board, to research, develop, and implement an aggregation program and enter into a contract with a competitive supplier of electricity. The objectives of the aggregation program are to: one, lower the cost of electricity. I hope everyone at home is paying attention. Two, gain longer term price stability. And three, offer more renewable energy options. The aggregation plan will go through a very strict and comprehensive review and approval process with the Department of Energy Resources, DOER, and the Department of Public Utilities, also known commonly in the column as the DPU. An important element of the process leading to approval of the aggregation plan of a municipality by the DPU is to allow for a review of the aggregation plan by its residents. The aggregation plan was available for review at our municipal offices and on our website from November 29th, 2018 through December 13th, 2018, and a public hearing was advertised for the following two weeks. I'm going to, at this time, hand this over to Mr. Denny. Mr. O'Rourke is, we were going to have a... Mr. O'Rourke was going to be with us tonight. He had a car problem on the way here, and unfortunately, he won't be able to make it, but...
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in the process of the two-week period where it was posted on the town's website and published, what we received, full comments from the constituency. I can read through them very quickly. And then we can open it up and see if there's public commentary here tonight. After that, we'll entertain, well, this board will consider the entertainment of a motion to send this to the Department of Energy Resources, which is the next steps. And I can work through the timeline. But for the viewing audience, we've received... First question received, "Does the town know what the electricity rates will be in this program? And does it depend on the number of individuals in the program?" And that was submitted by Deborah Felton. And John O'Rourke, who is representing Good Energy through this body, has designated as the consultant to solicit this energy aggregation for the town, was very active in answering these questions from the constituency. His answer to that first question was, "We are still in the early stages of the Department of Energy Resources consultation in the Department of Public Utilities approval process for Milton Municipal Electricity Aggregation Plant. Moving through this process is expected to take between six and eight months. Once the plan is approved by DPU, we can develop a plan for public outreach and education and a competitive bid for electric supply. All residents and businesses in Milton on the basic service with Eversource are eligible to participate in the electricity aggregation. It is expected that about 90% of the eligible customers would participate in the electricity aggregation." The second email we received from the constituent read as follows. "What will the rate be? When is the opt-out period? How does one opt out?" And that was from resident Steve Frazetti. Mr. O'Rourke responded to Mr. Frazetti. Again, "We are six to eight weeks away from conducting a competitive bid for electricity supply, knowing the rate and starting the opt-out period." We received a third comment from constituent Tracy Robinson. "Can you tell me the time and location for the January 9th public meeting? I'm just trying to understand what this means for Milton residents. Not sure what the selectman's meeting is the best option for education, and the time does not work well for me. Any advice would be appreciated." Christine Stanton from our office helped answer this question. She responded with information on the public hearing and provided the resident with information from a mass.gov, Department of Energy Resources link, which provides more education and detailed information on that aggregation plan. And the last comment we received over that two-week period came in from constituent Henry McLean, who was wondering, "What is the timeframe for the rollout of this program?" The response with the information on the public hearing was provided with the resident with bullet points from the proposed plan and provided our Good Energy LP representative's name and contact information for further answers and questions. So just to recap and put it in perspective, as the chair said, on May 7th, town meeting approved this article, allowing this board to utilize Good Energy to consult after working through the process to create competitive bids for energy aggregation in this town. If this board should approve that motion, it would be sent to the Department of Energy Resources, at which point that consultation takes a month to two months. From that, there's a letter of consent written from DOER and the town to the Department of Public Utilities, and that process takes anywhere from five to six months after that. So it's... All that information is still provided on the website. There are examples of how one would opt out and how one would be informed of what's been going on. And again, Mr. O'Rourke and this office is available for comment at any time going forward if any other question should arise.
So we have a motion here before us. We're moving that motion forward?
It's a public hearing. I think you have to just ask...
Oh, do I? I'm sorry. Okay, I'm looking around. Is there anyone here to speak to this?
Yeah.
Mr. Joe Henning?
Bill Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive. I was surprised that it became an opt-out rather than an opt-in. I don't recall at town meeting that that was part of the deal. Was that part of the deal that town meeting voted on?
Right.
I just don't think it's right, because people will automatically just, you know, go into it. If that's what they decided, I guess that's fine. But I don't like it, and I don't think it's right. I think people should choose it, not choose to get out of it, because people just won't. Also, I'm not sure that this is really valid if he's not here. If John O'Rourke is not here to present to us, you know, exactly how the plan is supposed to work. A lot of what Mike read was about going to a website, reading this and reading that. Why wouldn't we be able to be educated by a person who was in charge of doing this? If he's not here, is this really the public meeting that it was supposed to occur? I don't think so. So I'm just a little concerned that, you know, that this is the public meeting, but the person who's supposed to be here isn't here. Do you remember when we did the stormwater thing? There was a lot more education going on during the meetings, during the presentations to the public about exactly what was going on. And that's not happening here. Thanks.
One sec. Don't... I mean, you do bring a point. I don't... This was the last minute. It just happened. And I think from the legal aspect, I think we're on firm ground as far as meeting the legality of having the public hearing. But I'm not 100% of... I wouldn't object totally to bringing them back if we could, just to Mr. Joe Henning's point, to be able to answer those questions. Would that be... Would you find that comfortable if we did that at a later date?
I would be really happy with that.
Okay. So we'll try to do that. And I'm sure we can do that, and I'm sure he'd want to come as well.
Okay, great.
Okay? All right. Thank you.
Yeah, and Selectwoman Conlin just noted one of the pages in his handout. "During the planned implementation period from two to two and a half months, there will be a comprehensive and intense public outreach education to saturate the market with information about aggregation through multiple media channels, including press releases to regional and local newspapers, public access TV, social media, informational website, printed marketing materials, public information meetings, and call center access." Additionally, there is... On the town's website is the 96-page document, the aggregation agreement, which has a lot of this information. It's very comprehensive. It talks about the 30-day opt-out notice. It talks about the implementation of the public notification. But to Mr. Joe Henning's point, if we need to bring Mr. O'Rourke back here, we can, but it's... This process is thoroughly vetted through the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources and then further vetted through the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities before it gets to that stage where people consider whether they want to opt out and the public information outreach program begins.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can I just ask, Mike, if we delay until the X meeting, will there be... Will the program be compromised in any way?
No, but we do have to re-advertise it.
The public hearing?
Yes, and push it out, probably say, you know, probably one of the February meetings.
Wouldn't... I see. Because this was... So first, we had the... First, we had the review period, which was advertised in the Milton Times and advertised online. And then we had this meeting that was advertised online for a long period of time. So we'd have to go through that process again.
Yes, and to Chair Wells's point, we think we're on pretty good legal ground having opened the public hearing today and asked for commentary from the public and then entertaining a motion to forward this to Mass Department of Energy Resources.
Can I ask, from a point of law, instead of adjourning this public meeting, can we suspend it and then reopen it at a later date without having to do all the advertising?
That's interesting.
Almost as in court, you know, courts where we're adjourning...
Continue at the next one.
Yeah, cool. We continue to the next meeting. I propose that we continue this until a meeting that we can get Mr. O'Rourke here. And I think, Mr. Joe Henning, that would be your... Would that be your concern as well?
Yeah, I guess all I would say is that, you know, reading a 96-page document...
Right, I get it. I get...
I mean, I'm sure everything's in there.
Right.
But honestly, I'm not going to read it.
I get that. So I'd make a motion at this... Is there anyone else, Mr. Wolf, that we... What was the word you used, Katie?
Continue.
Continue this to...
Public hearing.
Continue the public... Till January 23rd, where Mr. O'Rourke can join us.
Second.
All those in favor? Any other discussion for us? Any other discussion? Tony, anyone?
No.
Wonder... All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go back into executive session. But before we do... No, they're not here, so I may just keep going.
Yeah.
I'm going to skip five and six. Go to seven, confirm future meeting dates. We're on for January 17th, which is a joint meeting of the park commissioners and the planning board regarding Milton Village and the Woffe area council aging 7:00 PM. And January 23rd will be our normal schedule. Are you all okay with that? Okay. Item eight, approval of meeting minutes. We have a motion before us to approve the meeting minutes from September 26, 2018, as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, citizen speak. Do we have anyone here for citizen speak tonight?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Henning, you can come back and join us.
Again, Phil Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive. I've been a little concerned about the lack of any action that I can detect on airplane noise. And I had gotten a note from Dr. Christensen saying it's been 1,128 days since town hall meeting held in Milton with Congressman Lynch, more than 202,000 jet departures and approaches over Milton since then. 310 days since the last MCAC representative report to the town of Milton. More than 64,000 jet departures and approaches over Milton since then. 191 days since the last Milton Airplane Noise Advisory Committee meeting. More than 34,000 jet departures and approaches over Milton since then. This is, in my mind, and I've worked on this for five years, more than five years, and I think it's among the top three issues in our town that threaten property values and threaten our quality of life. And I do think... I sort of look forward to Mike Zulis joining Katie Conlin in, you know, putting more attention to this. But we haven't had meetings, and we haven't had updates. And I think we should do that. I feel like it's almost like Nero playing the violin while Rome burns, you know? We can't let this fall by the wayside. We can't let this become a secondary, tertiary issue, you know? This is... It's number one in terms of... I think about selling my house with airplanes roaring over it, and I wonder what's going to happen. What kind of price will I have to take, you know, when I put my house up for sale? So I urge the board to become more active in fighting the airplane issue. I think, you know, I've not been satisfied with the MCAC and its actions. I think Block 1 neglected Milton. I think we have to be sure that Block 2 includes Milton, relief from Milton. And I would appreciate anything that could be done to reactivate, re-energize our activities. Thanks.
Thank you. Do either one of you want me to go to item 25 now? Or do you want to just keep it in order, which is citizen speak response? It's... You don't have to just... So since you're here, Mr. Joe Henning, we'll go to item 25, which is citizen speak response. And I believe Mr. Zulis has some comments.
So Phil, absolutely right. It is one of the most critical issues, and it is something that this board has paid attention to. And there has been a lot of activity over the last six months. Have we gotten to where we need to get? Absolutely not. Will we continue our efforts that we have made over the last six months? Absolutely. And I just want to lay out, just for you, and you may be aware of it, but for the public as well, what we've been trying to do, particularly in the last six months and even in the last year. In the last year, back January of last year, there were letters to the FAA, Antemass Port, about Block 2. Back in February of last year, there was the purchase of the airplane noise monitors and the authorization of that. And then particularly over the summer, we, you know, starting in June, we worked with the Boston City Council, and we got unanimous votes by this board and the Boston City Council to make efforts with respect to the FAA authorization bill. We were in touch with, and we worked with our senator's office and with our congressman's office on that. We worked very hard with that. In July, we responded to the EDR. This board responded to the EDR with a very extensive response, with a lot of input from a lot of people. It was a... And all of this is on file, but that was back in July. Back in August, again, working with our MCAC rep, we sent out letters to JetBlue on the Vortex generator, which, along with the efforts of Representative Driscoll, maybe our little meant something, maybe it didn't. But at the end of the day, JetBlue came through with some positive news on the Vortex generator. Also, in August, we followed up with our efforts with Representative Capuano to try to move the FAA on the authorization bill. We followed up again in August with Senators Warren and Markey and Capuano and Lynch with respect to the JetBlue issue. That was back in August, before JetBlue did it. And so I think we have made a lot of effort over the last, particularly in the last six months, to try to move this effort forward. But we need to do more, and we will do more. I know this board is committed to it. I know, you know, Katie and I have tried to... Has ANEC met? No, it needs to, absolutely. And we've been trying to schedule it, and we'll absolutely do it. And on the MCAC, absolutely, we need to try to get some more out of that. So we're working. Have we got the results we need? Absolutely not. Are we going to keep working the issue? Absolutely, so.
I guess, I'm sorry to interject, but I'm wondering if it would make sense for us to invite Representative Lynch and Representative Presley to come back, because those meetings are always extremely well-attended. And I think that we need to make sure that Presley and Lynch feel accountable to us on what they're doing.
And I'll tell you, that's one of the things that we've been considering doing, and also expanding it to the senators as well. And we've been trying... We've been... Again, our intention is to work with Boston on that, to try to have more of a... More of an opportunity to get that. So that definitely is in play. We've been trying to figure out exactly how to make that happen and when to make that happen. But hopefully, our intention is that it will happen sooner rather than later. So you're absolutely right.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add to what Mike said, that Mike and I and the town administrator met with the MCAC rep probably two or three months ago about some next steps. So some of those are in varying stages of progress.
And to... Well, I've not spoken to Senator President. I never spoke to Representative Capuano. Excuse me. She... Did she hear that, Senator Presley?
Give her a promotion.
I have talked with, as Michael knows, with Congressman Lynch several times as his staff. And every time I talk to him, I mean, this is definitely a... And I... While this is your lane, and I support everything that you do in this, 100% the two of you, I think us partnering with Boston was a very smart thing to do. It gave you a much bigger baseball bat in the game than just ourselves. And I think that's a smart thing to do, so. I hope, Mr. Joe Henning, that... I knew Mr. Zulis. I know what they've been doing, and I felt that everyone, yourself as well as an officer, should hear that tonight. So thank you for that, and thank you, Michael, and Katie, for that. Okay, so now I'm going to... I'm still not ready to go, so I'm going to keep going. So John Thompson's not here. Tom Couse is not here. Capital approval. Amy and Tom aren't here. So Wallace is here, but we need... So let's go to item 12, which is a discussion approval to reopen and close the warrant for the annual town meeting. There's a motion here to reopen. This is specific to the... One is to extend the term of the bylaw review committee, and we have a warrant there, and then... That's it? So if someone could read this motion or...
I'm over that we reopen the warrant for the annual town meeting on May 6, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, the proposed motion is to approve an article to extend the term of the bylaw review committee beyond its current expiration term of November 5, 2019, and expand the mandate to include zoning personnel administration, wetlands, and wastewater management bylaws as part of the general code codification project. I now have a motion to... Do we have to vote that?
We do.
So...
So I'll second your motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
Can I just ask?
Absolutely.
So, and I was reading the motion, and initially, it struck me as very broad that we were adding zoning, personnel administration, wetlands, and wastewater management. But we're just talking about bylaws with respect to each of those issues.
Correct.
Okay.
Remove the restriction from the current committee.
Okay, so the current committee is... Was charged with reviewing bylaws, except for those areas.
Correct.
This is from Mr. Mullin, correct?
Yes, their term ends in November of this year.
We have a copy of the motion.
Right.
And I think it's more specific than Mike's.
Right. Right.
An email from the chair, Peter Mullin.
Yes, I saw that. So it started with their term expiring. They're working on a general codification with the clerk's office of all town bylaws.
Right.
And that term ends in November of this year, 19. And that project they were working on would probably reach farther than town meeting and might not make an October town meeting.
And the real purpose is this proposed stormwater management bylaw? Is that what we're talking about here?
Yeah, they're talking about personnel administration, wetlands, zoning bylaw, and stormwater management bylaw.
Oh, I see. So there's... Okay, so I thought... Here, I'll give that back to you, because I have one. So, and I'm sorry I'm being obtuse about this, but so is the purpose of... The purpose of those...
Go to confession.
I know. The purpose for opening it for those areas, are those singular? Are they all in the aggregate? In other words, are we opening it for zoning, personnel administration, wetlands, and wastewater management for the purpose of developing a stormwater management bylaw? Or are these all separate issues, separate areas that need to be addressed by the bylaw committee?
Separate.
Separate areas. Okay. Okay.
With different chapters.
Okay. All right. Okay.
What they're looking to do, Mike, I was on this committee. So they're looking to really update all of the bylaws. And prior to this being submitted as an article, it was, as you said, everything with the exception. And then they moved towards this general codification project. And they discovered, in order for us to really complete our job as we've been charged to do, we need to include these items. And I think that it was originally left out of the charge because it was so cumbersome and overwhelming.
That was my question, why was it left out originally?
And Peter Mullin said, "I love this. Give me more to do."
Okay, all right, okay.
And frankly, I think it makes sense. You know, rather than bifurcate and parcel off and say, "Well, do this, but not this", they're taking a more complete approach.
Okay, makes sense. Now you answered all my questions.
Okay. Any further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to make a motion to close the warrant for the annual town meeting on May 6, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to jump. Since we're doing this, I'm going to do the three of them together, 14 and 15. Discussion approval, reopen and close the warrant for February 25th, 26th, 2019 special town meeting. I'm making a proposed motion to open the warrant for a special town meeting on February 25th and 26th, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion?
You're on number 14?
Yes. I'm on 14. I'm sorry, Katie. I'm trying to... Can I do 14 and 15 together once we open it? Can we hold it open and then end it at the...
Yeah, I thought... I think you skipped over 13, but...
Did I miss 13? Okay.
I thought you did that deliberately. You just...
I did, yeah, because I was going to February. Did I?
Right.
I did. I didn't even see. I jumped. I did that by mistake. All right. No, I'm going to back it up. Oh, so I'm going to do this one now, so we'll stay there. So my motion here is to vote to approve a revised warrant article which seeks to amend Section 3Q of the Milton zoning bylaws, the great estates planned unit development bylaw so-called. That was second.
Second.
Any discussion on this bylaw? Make a motion to close the warrant for special... Any... Katie, do you want to...
Did you make a motion to open the warrant?
I did make the motion on it, so we voted on it.
I didn't think we voted on it.
We didn't vote on it?
We did not vote on it. I thought Richard was going to open all three.
Right.
I can open all... So I'm going to do all three, then.
And then we'll vote on all three collectively.
I'm going to do that.
I think you have to do them sequentially. Yeah.
And then I think...
How did May get ahead? That's what screwed me up. I'm like, how did May get ahead of February? So no prob... Jen, not... We'll blame Michael. No, there's no blame. I'm only kidding. Okay. So hearing this, backing this up, I'm going to start all over and do this. Item 12. I'm making a motion to reopen the warrant for the annual town meeting on May 6th. Are we still?
We did that one.
14.
We're on February.
February.
We are 14. But about 13, I did do that. Okay. So now 14. My motion is to reopen the warrant for special town meeting for February 25th and 26th, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. So now my motion is to vote to...
We have to do a vote.
All those in favor. I'm sorry. All those in favor. Aye. Given that, I'm going to make a motion to approve a revised warrant article which seeks to amend Section 3Q of the Milton zoning bylaws, the greatest estates planned unit development bylaw so-called. That was second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now I'm making a motion to close the warrant for the special town meeting on February 25th and 26th, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so, skip 13, 12 is done.
So, Mr. Chair, are you deferring number 15 until Cheryl Togayus gets here?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all right, is that all right with you?
Yes.
Just for the, I just wanna make sure, just for the jury.
I know she wanted to be here.
Okay, so let me back up now. We did 12. Seven, eight, nine, so I'm gonna go, at this point, I'm gonna go back into executive session. Do we have all of our trustees here?
I think they're out there.
Let me take a peek, so I just have one point of, one point of procedural question. We have two issues, two items for executive session. We needed one to for the second one, given our meeting, we do, okay, so that's all, I just wanna make sure, okay. So given that, we're going to go into session, executive session, for both five and six, to come out to continue with the backing, to finish our regular meeting. At this point, I make a motion to enter an executive session, I'm gonna make two motions, to enter an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to the purchase exchange, taking lease, or value of real property, remaining portion of the town farm land, believing that having such discussion, open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board, and then return to open session. And also, we're gonna be in executive session to discuss strategy with respects to HDMW Randolph Avenue LLC versus the Town of Milton Board of Appeals, Housing Appeals Committee Number 2015-03, believing that having such discussion in this matter, an open session may have a detrimental effect upon the litigating position of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Appeals. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Mr. Zouzis?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh, yes, we're in this, so we're currently in executive session, we'll be quick, we'll be quick. I rethink that one. Okay, so we're gonna go to item 10, which is a discussion, the sewer betterment with Town Engineer John Thompson, John, come, join us at the table, please.
Good evening to the board, yeah, I know, it's, it's a busy agenda, so, this is pretty brief.
Well, thank you, sorry, Michael.
Thanks for coming in, John.
Sure. All right. So again...
Thanks, John.
Thanks for having me in, and, well, we'll, we'll keep it brief, just wanted to inform, inform the board as the sewer commissioners in town of a resident request that came in for a, to investigate a potential sewer betterment. We think that the, the project has merit, and certainly would be a straightforward application of a betterment process, but obviously, before we start moving the ball forward, wanted to bring the board up to speed on the request, answer any questions or concerns you may have, and certainly know if there are any objections to, to moving forward. The graphic I just handed out shows the area in question, which is Randolph Avenue between Artwell Street and Gun Hill Street. There are, there are currently 11 properties in that stretch of roadway, and there's no public sewer available in Randolph Avenue. Two of the 11 houses are currently connected to sewer just because the, the properties are shaped such that they could run sewers out to abutting streets. Number 480 Randolph Ave, as you can see, connects over to Gun Hill Street, and number 501 Randolph Ave comes down and connects to Coolidge Road. But the other houses, in, the other nine houses in this section, highlighted red here, are currently on septic systems. Also of note is just the proximity to Uncutty Brook as well, so we think that a potential sewer betterment would certainly have an environmental benefit. I'm not saying it's the case here, but it's sort of a classic cause of, of bacteria contamination in surface waters and streams can be failed septic system, so certainly any effort to abandon septic systems and get houses connected onto municipal sewer would, would ultimately be an environmental benefit in, in the future. The request did come in from Ms. Rachel Woodhouse, she's at number 525 Randolph Avenue, and I do know that there are at least two others, oh, Rachel's here, there are at least two other residents that, that are in favor at least of the town looking at this, if, if not more. I did also provide just some information on the last two sewer betterments that, that occurred in town. The last one was in 2006 on Woodland Road, and in that case, the, the town basically assumed one-third of the project cost, the total project cost, which is the cost to design and construct the system, and two-thirds of the project cost was ultimately assessed to the resident, residents in the form of betterment liens on the property. And those are assessed over 20 years at, at 5%. And prior to that, there was also a sewerment, sewer betterment on Forbes Road, Cheryl Drive, Marques Drive, and Milton Hill Road, and in that scenario, the town assumed one-half of the total project cost, and then one-half of the total project cost was, was borne by the residents that benefited from the project, and, and that was, those costs were assessed over 20 years at 2% per annum, so. My understanding is that there, there is, there is general, mass general laws that sort of govern the process, but some of the specifics on, on how the finances break down and what, you know, interests are charged and things like that are, are local decisions, so something that we would, we would investigate.
Come to this, like, come to a decision, or...
So essentially, you know, the, the next steps would, would be basically to start honing in on a more accurate estimate for design and construction, starting to generate what the actual sewer betterment costs would be, both for the residents in the town, trying to identify funding, and then ultimately meeting with the residents to sort of walk them through, walk them through what the, what, essentially, so, you know, there is, there is some level of effort that would be required on, on my part, and on the part of probably John, and, and DPDW Director, the Treasurer, and the Accountant, so, before we start that process, certainly wanted to present it to the board and open it up to questions. If there are any.
Four is yours.
So, we've heard that there are a couple, or maybe three residents, but do, would we be compelling other residents who would like to keep their septic systems to...
So, in, in both of the last cases of the sewer betterments, and I, and I assume would do the same thing here, what you could, what you could do is essentially give residents the option to either connect now at the time of the sewer betterment, or they could pay a reduced betterment and basically not connect now, they would still have to, to pay some benefit, betterment, sorry, because they are getting the benefit of the new public's
Main sewer line, right?
Run in front of the house, and it is available to them in the future, but it, there's a reduced cost.
Okay.
So we could break it up both ways.
And just looking at the fact that the town funded a half, and then a third, and how, how has that arrived at that decision?
To, to be honest, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I have to do a little bit more poking around, I guess, but I'm assuming it would be a function of the, of the total cost and, and available funding.
Anyone else? Any other questions? I understand, I'm good, I'm good with it.
Okay, great, so with the board's permission, we'll, we'll start looking into it a little bit further, and report back when, when things start to gel up a little bit.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, thank you for your patience.
Very patient. See you tomorrow at 7:00 AM.
See you tomorrow, 7:00 AM.
We'll be traveling, navigation, tomorrow.
Thank you for your patience, yes. Right.
I got capital this morning, so...
Oh, did you? Those are tough news.
Okay, item number 11, we're gonna have a discussion with the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, recommendations with co-chair Amy Dexter and Tom Hurley. Is Amy not here?
Yeah, she's here.
You wanna, you can come up and join us, Tom. We also have with us the Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee who is here, Mr. Brian Walsh, and the Vice Chair, Dan, so you can chime in whenever you want, and if you want to come, you, I, I, you can do whatever you want, I'm fine with it. Dan loves to talk, you, we're gonna, we're limited, though, we're on message units tonight, we're trying to...
Can I just, before we get started, because right now, the letter is for 2.7 million, and it's contemplated to be paid through a bonding, which means I would be recused on that, but we had had some discussion earlier about a potentially smaller amount that possibly could be funded out of free cash if there were a smaller piece of this, which would not require me to be recused, so I, I guess I'm trying to get a sense of where the board is going with this, and whether, whether I do need to be recused at the start of this or not.
So knowing that, to both issues, I, at last week's meeting, wanted to hear the length on this, and how we get to, so, I don't think we're talking about the bond, I think everybody wants to hear from Tom as to how the committee came to the, where we're at now, and how we wanna move this, versus taking like free cash, or...
Yeah, the, it, it was really just a matter of keeping all your options open. There is some free cash there, clearly, you took to do it, but if this project comes to fruition, then it's, it's gonna be one of two things, you know, some of it's gonna be paid by a potential gift, some of it's gonna be rolled into either Article 37, or it's gonna be ruled into a debt exclusion if Article 37 doesn't pass, and a debt exclusion does pass, so, so the, the idea of the capital committee was to, let's take some of that free cash, that free cash you were talking about, and just park it in the, in the, in the capital fund for a year.
Cap stabilization.
Stabilization.
Cap stabilization.
Stabilization fund, yeah, until we know what's going on, you know, if, if it looks like the project isn't gonna come to fruition, then we can pull the money out, pay the temporary financing off, and, and go forward, but it leaves more options open than just, once you spend free cash, it's spent, you know, you're not gonna get it back again.
So I'm not sure to my, just so to, because I want you to be comfortable, because I know you've talked on this about short-term bonding, is that, are we in fact talking about a short-term bond?
It's a note, actually.
It's a note, yeah, so that's why I thought...
Yeah, I'm sure bond...
All right, well, just to be on the safe side...
Can I make a suggestion, actually, Katie, before you, can we take this in two parts? Can we talk about the project first, and how the project is gonna proceed, which I think you can participate in, because we're not talking about the, how it's gonna be funded, and then if there are questions, and then if we're gonna talk about how it's gonna be funded, maybe you step out at that point, if that, you know, if we could do it, because in terms of the project as a whole, it's good to have everyone involved, if it's possible.
As far as the drawdowns, as far as the dates and the place marks, how it's going to go.
I'm just suggesting, if...
I agree with Michael, I think you should...
Two parts.
Yeah, I guess if it gets into more...
You, John, you comfortable with, I, would you be, I'd be comfortable with Katie hearing the, what Michael's proposed, she's not gonna vote on, she's gonna step out for the voting part of it, the, but I think she should hear on how we're going to have to do this.
Well, I'm actually suggesting that, if she's gonna, if she needs to be, I hate to be, I'm sorry, Katie, if you need to be recused from the bonding, there's no discussion of funding, we just talk about the project.
First.
Not how it's gonna be funded, but the project, maybe the cost, but not how it's funded.
Okay.
That's, that's a, I think, probably the way to describe it.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
It may be shorter than law, it may be, it may be pretty, go ahead.
Well, then, here's a question, I've been recused because my father-in-law is on the committee, so is it inappropriate for me to be here for this portion?
He's not represent, he hasn't ever voted in any of this, though, he, he's, I thought about this for you, he, we're just talking about how to find money, how we're gonna find money, he has no, the only part, I would say, in my own opinion, John, Tom Couse, you can agree, if we were talking about the gift, and if that gift were for, I would agree right then and there, because he, he's the main player in the gift, but I think as what we're at right now, I think we're okay, I don't, he's just a member of that committee, he's not here, we're not here, the committee was on, the committee came here on their own tonight, just to hear, and if they, but...
I don't think you're required to judge yourself, but if you're uncomfortable, you're certainly, I don't think legally you're required to do so.
Thank you.
I'll do whatever you wanna do.
Okay, no, I'll stay.
Okay, good. Okay, let's start, Tom.
Do you want me to start?
Go, be my guest.
Okay, so I believe the Fire Station Building Committee presented the project to the board, correct? So, do we wanna talk about the whole project, or just the part in front of us today? So, the first part that they were requesting for February special town meeting was the 2.7 million dollars that the capital committee is recommending to be funded. That covers the architecture, design, and owner's project manager for all three fire stations, for the total cost of those costs. So, one of the things that they did provide the capital committee was, was a cash flow on approximately the dates of when the money would be spent, so it's not like it would all be upfront right after February 28th, because that could be problematic, so, the committee, the capital committee talked about that a lot, because, can I talk about, I can't talk about funding at all at this point, right?
You can't talk about the fact that it's a cancelable contract.
Yeah, so, what we then focused on was, well, first of all, the committee felt, the committee being the capital committee felt it was really important to show a commitment to this project, it's been pushed off, and pushed off, and pushed off, and several of the members also, we have some, like April works a lot with state contracts, I guess, so, she expressed how important it was to be shovel-ready in the event that, in the future, there are any kind of FEMA grants, or MEEGA, or whatever they would be, to move forward with this project. Right now, there aren't any federal or state grants that would cover the construction of a fire station, but in the past, there has been, and if you don't have the architecture and the design plans, you're not even considered for any of those opportunities, so, the committee really felt it was important to, A, show a commitment to this project by recommending the full 2.7, B, so that it would be shovel-ready in the event that there is any type of other available funds, whether it's in the nature of a donation, or a grant, or some kind of state or federal funding, and B, a commitment that when the contract is written and put together, that there would be, I don't know if this is the right terminology, be like, stop...
Yes.
Gaps that, in the event that...
Funding.
Funding, or the full project didn't get approved, that, that there could be milestones where we would have the ability to stop the spend before the full 2.7 was spent. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, it's standard language, is that, in AIA, contract with the designer can be broken at any time?
I just wanted to add that the standard language that's in the town's contract that was sent as a draft with the RFQ, the request for qualifications stated that, it was stated as two phases, one phase, which is through design development, which gets us to fall town meeting, roughly, and then the second phase would be negotiated after the fact, but regardless of the phasing, the contract can be by, canceled by either party within short notice.
I think another consideration, too, that the capital committee had was, and discussed was, just the continuity of having one architect in all three projects, and hopefully, they have design on all of them ready, so that they could be let to, you know, hopefully, be it as one general contract, you know, as opposed to what happened at the schools...
We're talking about the schools, the difficulty of the schools, all different GCs, and...
Right, so made it difficult, so, so that's, that was another reason.
Well, other than funding, I don't have much to add, do you?
No, I mean, other than, my understanding is that the, the Fire Station Building Committee would like to come back in the fall for, you know, assuming this gets passed by town meeting, with a, a full project, you know, to, you know, to break forward a capital project in the fall.
Yeah, and if you look at the cash flow that was provided of the 2.7 million, approximately 381,000 would be spent from, if it's approved at February town meeting through the end of this June, so fiscal 19, another 921,000 for full fiscal year 20, and another 1,012 for fiscal 21, and 366 for fiscal 22. The other thing that the building committee provided us was, we had asked, how much would you need to get you from February to fall town meeting, and that number was approximately $670,000, and that's where the discussion started to come into play of...
To Katie's point.
Other than bonding, what other means, could you potentially break it up into pieces to fund it, so that, until we had additional, you know, design, and had more concrete estimates on the construction and whatnot. That's kind of the thought process that went through. That's kind of the thought process that went through the committee's discussions.
And to your point, I went to the meeting, not this week's meeting, but last week's, with that in my mind, like, so, do we just take, I wasn't alone in that, do we, you know, just take 600 of this year out of free cash? But when I listened to Tom and all of us felt afterwards that the route that they want to go now is, with the very strong language on the contract is the way to go, to just do this once. And I will say, I, my fear is that it falls off the radar, or one piece of it, and then you never get back to it. And so, that's, I mean, Tom, there's been so much work in this, from everything towards Article 37, the study committee, now the building committee. We're just at the point now where we have to bring this to a reality. We're in the marathon, we got to finish it. We got to finish it. And now, I think we're going pot big. So, that's, you may want to recuse yourself.
Yeah, I'm thinking you're getting into a financing discussion now. So, if it's more than, I mean, if it's a free cash discussion, that's one discussion, but if it's a bonding discussion, which is where I hear you're heading, I think I'll be recused.
Well, I have some questions about the, about the project, actually, and the timing of the project, which I think, so, so I guess I'm not entirely clear on the downside to appropriating 670 to get you to fall and seeing where you are at that point. And so, maybe you can walk me through that. What's really the...
The rationale is your options, because, you know, the fear originally was, and I'm going to have to say the word, but if you were to finance this with bonds and the project didn't happen, then you're going to be paying those bonds off over 30 years potentially. And that was not a good answer.
Right.
But by saving the free cash out, parking it someplace, short-term financing, until you know what your options are, gives you kind of the best of both worlds. You know, you're going to pay a little bit of interest, but it's, but, you know, interest and temporary financing is, you know, 1% or 2%, it's pretty short dollars.
But couldn't you do that if you appropriated 670 as opposed to 2.7?
Yeah, so if I can answer that, and I may look to Dan to add to it if I don't answer it properly, but, or to Tom. I believe the idea was, as Tom mentioned earlier, if we bid it all out at once, you can get one project manager, one architecture to do everything. You only do the 670, you're limited to not what you need for headquarters, not what you need for...
Engine four.
Engine four, not what you need for East Milton. You're limited to what you need from February to October. And now, that's not even enough to cover headquarters, which I believe is the first priority in all of this. So, how are you going to sign a contract? When they put it in front of me to say, we have an appropriation to do the architecture, I'm going to have to say no because it's not enough. So, we were trying to, A, show a commitment to the project. This has been, this can's been kicked down the alley for a very long time. I think, I don't know anybody out there that can say we don't need new stations. And B, just probably get better costing, be shovel-ready for all in the event that some additional financing comes out, and...
Yeah, just to add that. Just to add to that, a lot of the committees' thought behind this was, you know, there's a lot of understanding and work that's going into these numbers and everything, and, you know, compartmentalizing it and breaking it out kind of makes it a little more difficult. And one of our rationales was, if we go to the special town meeting and we explain the funding and we explain the process for the design portion, you know, we get that all approved. That's just one thing that's done, that if we then can come back to a fall town meeting, we can focus on just the construction cost side of it, and it's a little easier to explain and you're not, you know, re-explaining the design portion or explaining that, you know, oh, well, that money that was already spent was, so there's more to compartmentalize it and make it clear-cut. This is all designed, you know, for an architect, this is for an OPM, and these are going to be their fees roughly. It's a negotiated contract based on who we select on qualifications, and then come back with those professionals and give an update. And then, it's a really nice breakpoint with the fall town meeting happening where we project design development to be done. And for comparison, when the firespace needs committee came with their presentation that formed the building committee, they were a schematic design. So, they were, you know, they were pretty far early into their process. So, we thought that it was a good cut point to do it that way, but really, you want to show the commitment to the firms that we're hiring, that we anticipate this to really go, that it's not a study and it's not an exercise.
Yeah, so that's compelling. I guess my concern is making sure that, and I'm not, I'm not saying you said the wrong thing, but that the commitment is to a deliberative process and making sure that we go through the process, you know, deliberately rather than just, you know, let's get this piece done and then let's get this piece done. Because, you know, as you look at this, you have half of this money, the 2.7 is not going to be paid out until FY '21 or FY '22.
Right.
Right, so do we need to do it now? Two of the stations, we don't know where they're going to go yet, right?
No, one, only one.
Well, where's the, where's headquarters going to go?
It's going either next or in.
But we don't know...
It's some sort of combination of either renovation, addition, modification, but we have the general area that it would...
Well, I guess, I guess, and this is a question for the committee, is there, is there a process or a plan in place for determining where it's going to go here? Because it's not, it's not, I mean, we don't know exactly where it's going to go, right? You know, just like we don't know, so...
Well, I mean, we don't know exactly where any of them are going to go.
If I could, if I could, I guess it would help me on those two, where we're approving architecture and design costs for two stations where I don't know where they're going to go, right? I mean, maybe, you know, one may go here, it may go next door, and so I don't really know where, and then East Milton, we don't really know where it's going to go.
We don't.
So, if we have a plan for saying, okay, here's our, here's our, here's our process plan for determining where they're going to go, maybe that helps a little bit to...
Well, that's, you know, that's one of the big impetus for hiring the firm is, you know, we do know where some, we know some are going to move faster than others, but we need that design firm to help us answer some of those exact questions through the schematic design process and engaging the community, engaging, engaging the fire department and the select board to really hone in on those things. Our committee has done as much as we possibly can with the expertise that we have internally through volunteering our time to be able to answer these questions. We've gotten to an understanding of, we have a good feeling of what we can do with the space that's available at Atherton. We feel like we have a lot of options at headquarters, and we're feel like we're really narrowing in on the options over the next six months of what's East Milton will work into. And in terms of, you know, how much play that is, you know, we have a good feeling for what the size of the building is going to be, which is really what dictates the cost for the design fees and the OPM fees, because industry standard is, it's a percent based of the building costs, which is all derived from the size of it. So, we know, we have a good sense of what all these stations are going to be size-wise, so we know the cost for the design side. Where exactly some of these go are more construction costs that are going to have impacts, not the design costs. So, you know, designing for X lot and Y lot, there's not a lot of difference once you narrow in through the schematic design phase which one you're going to go with. So, that's kind of why we want that brought up.
Katie, go ahead.
If I could just add to that, though, I think it's important. So, and Dan touched upon this, but clearly, the headquarters, we know is going behind this building. To your point, are we going to tear down the entire existing station and rebuild on that footprint? That's about the one plan we could probably tell you is not going to happen that exact way, but we need to have this architect and an OPM to help us with the question. Do you reuse the last two bays and then you add on, you reuse the...
I'm sorry, the last two bays.
Yeah, the last two bays. And keep in mind, one of the things that we're painfully aware of is that these are critical public safety functions that have to be operable during the construction. And so, you look for opportunities, and one, if you have to build a temporary facility or allow for the temporary running of the headquarters station, if you were just to tear down and implode the current building, that's going to add about another $2 million to the cost. So, we're, we'll have an architect and office, and owner's project manager that's going to help us vet out the specific details, but generally speaking, there's no doubt where we're putting the headquarters. There's no doubt that we can fit an appropriate Atherton Street station on the property without disturbing the current rock building. There's no doubt that we can repurpose and utilize that building. And then, lastly, the East Milton station, there's no doubt now, we've become, one of the things we've become is experts on the size. We really tried to see if we could reuse the existing site. We spent a lot of time and effort, real effort, not just casual, to determine we couldn't. We tried to see if we could use that site and maybe one of the, you know, budding locations. Worked out specifics, that's not doable. But here's what we do know. We know how big that station is. We have a pretty good idea where you can plop that footprint down. How big a piece of property we're looking for, we're going to ask, we're going to solicit from the residents of that fire district, is there anyone out there that's willing to potentially sell the property? So, when we, so think of it as a process. We'll attack the headquarters, we're able to, to work on Atherton as well, whether it's simultaneous or not, still yet to be determined. But then, we'll be able to finally build the East Milton station. It'll give us time to pick that location, but the architectural costs, everything we're asking for you, your support tonight, that's not lost, it's all applicable, and it's going to get us there. And it also has a safety net. The safety net is, you know, we're going to do it in pieces, that's why we responded and laid out the schedule, we'll do it in pieces, and if for some strange reason the rug gets pulled out, it's not like that, this $2.7 million is just thrown out the window. I don't know, did I address...
Well, I guess, I guess what would help, and maybe, maybe it's for another time, is just knowing what the plan is for, I mean, I know, we know it's going to go back here, but, but we don't know where, right? We don't know if it's going to be a rebuild, we don't know how far it's going to go. So, I guess it would help me if we had a process and a timeline for when we're going to figure out where it's going to go here, and when we're going to figure out where it's going, where Engine 2 is going to go, and how. Are we going to have, are we going to have public meetings? Are we going to have, are we going to consider, is there going to be a land use planner? I mean, if we had a project plan, then that would help me say, okay, now we have a plan, now we know at least a plan for a timeline for where we're going to put it, and then we can do designs.
That's the one thing we need now to get to.
They need to kickstart. Right, they can't get any farther.
Yeah, but I want to follow up on Mike's point, because I don't think it is circular. I think it's, in talking with the town administrator, I like his idea that this really should be a series of several projects, because the master, the implementation committee for the master plan has been asked to look a little more broadly at the town center area here for the fire headquarters, whether it's relocating it to the adjacent parcel or reusing the existing building, but to wind in some of the other concepts that are in the master plan for the civic center. The other thing is, for East Milton, if we're talking a few years down the road, then I think the question is, building code can change over time. So, if we're already bringing in a designer who's going to start doing some work on these, because you know, you might know the size of the building, but if it's four or five years out down the road before we're actually going to be doing anything, could the, well, in terms of the financing, it might wind up having to be that way. I mean, obviously, there's a big major gift here that's, that would impact that, but, but depending, I mean, based, but based on the way the debt schedules are in the Article 37, it looks like we're going to be financing this over a period of, a longer period of time before, in stages. But if the building code could change over time, would that impact the design and the decision to bring in a designer at this stage? Or is it, does it more economically, does it make better economic sense to do the design in stages?
So, the, speaking as an engineer, that in, that the code changes are typically every two years in Massachusetts. Sometimes it gets stretched out to three, depending on adoptions and things like that. But a lot of the code changes aren't grandiose, sweeping changes. They're minor improvements and betterments and things like that, and lessons learned and interpretations and changes. So, the impact that that would have would be, in my opinion, pretty minimal, especially because when you permit, you're going to lock in that code, or when you, you know, decide to go through that process, and, you know, the code could change after the fact. But the code changes wouldn't be that grand that if, you know, we started the process today, that they're going to change it. And they're not, there's also grace periods, and there's also education to architects and engineers that it's coming. So, it's not like it's all of a sudden a sweeping change that, you know, happens overnight and people have to pivot to it. You know, it's educational, and there's a lot of people that know it's coming and what to expect. But to answer Mike's question, in terms of how does this process work, it's something I shared with the capital improvement committee, and I don't know if they have it on there, but I provided them with a chart that really shows the whole process of what the schematic designs, and really tries to narrow into those different items. Really what it turns into is coming out of the special town meeting, it would be up to our committee to really start engaging, and we've already started this process, through a Facebook page, through a website, we're really trying to communicate and reach out to more of the residents, and we'll have to meet with the different groups and planning boards and everything like that. But as we go through the schematic design phase and into the design development phase from March through October, that's when all those things would be happening. And the first thing we would do at a kickoff meeting with the architect is identify those steps and build out a very detailed schedule on that and identify how we want to approach that and how we want to integrate all these different groups, so that we know that the right people are getting the input and the opportunity to provide that input to our committee and to our design firm and to our OPM. It's kind of hard for us to generate that, and that's a lot of work, but frankly, I don't know if we would be able to have the time to volunteer. That's exactly why we need to hire this designer.
The designer is going to help you figure out where to, where to cite these things?
Yeah, and the owner's project manager. So, what we'll do is, the first thing we'll do is, you know, review the program. So, there was a program created which says each station needs all of these items, and, you know, you add up those items, and it tells you how many bunks you need and how much sizes they need to be, and it dictates anything else. The first step is to reevaluate that program for each station. You go through that process, and then we start into early design development phase, which will be, let's look at what our existing conditions are. Let's look at what the existing land is around it, you know, how can we reuse these pieces? What makes sense? You really start to understand how you can, you know, do adaptive reuse or, you know, one thing that comes to mind.
Can I interrupt you? Do these firms have a land use planning component to them that they, they bring to bear? Okay.
So, the, part of the design firms, I couldn't tell you off top, I had all of them, but there were 26 sub consultants that we asked them to make part of their team, from a building enclosure envelope to a structural engineer, geo tech, land use, all of those things. So, the design firm that we're trying to hire is all encompassing, and that's why, you know, the fee seems large, is because it's all of their sub consultants. It's not that we're just hiring a designer to generate renderings and pictures and things like that.
So, can I just add three things quickly before we, I hope that answered your questions to...
It was very helpful.
There were two things, there were three things that are happening that are critical. One of the things is, the buildings that we have now, as archaic as they are, from a capital committee, we've pretty much stopped anything that's going, particularly in this one here. No capital, don't put any money, you know, we don't want to throw bad money because it's not going to, so the longer we have to force them to exist there, those things are going to exasperate even, even to the point that maybe we have to have no choice. So, that's one thing from a financial point of view. Number two, I've listened both as their liaison, our liaison to them, and as our liaison, a member of the capital committee, I've listened, not only did, and I was thinking more like you, Katie, in the first, like, let's hit the 600 and just, the committee was unanimous on this. Not only were they unanimous, they wanted to come tonight. They feel that strongly about doing this now, and that we have to...
Which committee, the capital committee or the building committee?
Capital committee, wanted to come tonight, the capital committee, you know, they, and that, to the same to Brian, it both today, that they wanted to come because they felt that strongly, but the capital committee wanted to come tonight, some of the members, because they felt that strongly that we needed, into Tom and Amy's credit, they've done all this, I'm putting some faith in this. Basically, and when I go to my last thing to make my decision on it, my, as someone who spent so long in public safety in my life, I understand that. When you listen to Chief Grant, when you listen to these people, and you go in those buildings, look, when we're embedded tonight, someone's dial 911, these are the people who are coming. And this is the time, because if we don't do this now, and this falls off the edge, it's not coming back. Anything could happen in the economy tomorrow, and we have hurdles, we have this, we have Article 37 we've got to work on in the, in the spring, and then, you know, hopefully they get all these things out, but it's going to be, but we have to keep this moving, we can't stop now. As I say, I completely changed from just going for 600 to supporting the entire 2.7.
But in terms of the project, I just wanted us to be sure, we talked previously about engaging the implementation committee in the design of the civic center and looking at all of the different things that are in the master plan, so I don't want us to lose sight of that. And that doesn't sound like that's something that the fire building committee's design expert is really going to look at, other...
I think they'll do whatever we ask. I think they'll do whatever we ask. I think they will.
Yeah, it's something that hasn't been lost on our committee.
Right.
You know, there are some opinions that we should just build 100% a new building directly adjacent to it and, you know, give, and just cut ties with it. But there's a lot of members on the committee that think that we can reuse a lot of it, and that it makes more sense to try to integrate that. So, at the end of the day, I think, you know, having somebody come with fresh eyes that works on a fire station day in and day out, because most of us on the committee do not, you know, some of us have some experience with it, but it's not our day-to-day. The design firms that we're shortlisted and we're interviewing and will hire one of, you know, that's 90% of their work. They... They live and breathe public buildings. So they're, you know, they're dapply, you know, they're very keen on working with the public process and municipal organizations. So they, they're not going to be surprised when we ask them or request that they meet with these different committees to understand where their needs and their thought processes are coming from, especially with an owner's project manager, which is a state mandated hire. You know, that's something that they navigate a lot.
One thing I'd add too is, make no mistake about it. We will make sure that we do all of the steps like community involvement and listening as we go along. I would tell you right, right now that the Milton Center Neighborhood Association, we actually invite them. They get the meeting agendas. When I set out an agenda to the committee of when we're going to meet or the issues we're going to do, they're always copied on that. They're regularly at our meetings and we'll continue to do that and that's going to help, you know, the input as well.
I think what our board was talking about, we should, we want a vision for the area that we want the implementation committee to, and I'm pointing, because Cheryl's at the chair and she's in the back of the room, but we want the implementation committee to kind of weigh in on, on not only the fire issues, but also the, the other needs that are identified in the master plan. And I, I think we have to be realistic and before I refuse myself, realize that this is a project that's giving me, in all likelihood, East Milton is going to be the last one and it's, it's realistic that it's going to be four or five years rather than two years.
Yeah, so the, the reasoning for, if you see the timeline and the funding, I did that as, when I started working with Amy and the capital improvement planning committee, we did it as, all right, what's worst case scenario in, in terms of a funding process in an idealized world, everything can just run smoothly and they can all start, you know, a few months after each other, just to show what that money looks like. We've known from day one that those are going to stretch out in some means. You know, they may slide amongst each other in different directions from what we have shown on those charts, or they all may stretch out. You know, so we always knew that, but we wanted to start with, in terms of funding for Amy and Tom to work with, what's the worst case scenario?
So I think that's important actually, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think that's important because when I looked at those, at those timelines, I, I see all three of them being built at different stages at the same time, which didn't seem realistic to me.
No.
And all, and I see, and you see an appropriation of between 17 and 23 million dollars in year, and you say, well, wait a minute, is that really going to happen?
The only poss, go ahead. The one possibility that could happen, which is a real possibility, and you can tell me if I go wrong in this, if the town is fortunate enough to receive the gift, you could potentially at least start and do two and four, because you could save money, but we're getting one, bringing it out as one project.
But I think the gift you need to put aside.
I know, I know, but that's, I'm not necessarily saying, because that's the only possibility that could happen.
And that's completely how we run with this whole thing and, and our information project narrative to capital improvement committee. We mentioned at the end, there is a possibility, if that happens, we'll reconfigure this, but we've moved forward with, that the, the gift doesn't exist in that, the understanding that these timelines and schedules will change as we get into the process.
One other key point, and Katie, with all due respect, I know that it, it sort of seems because we're more focused on where the general location for headquarters and certainly the location for Atherton Street, it may seem, oh yeah, well, the East Milton's probably going to be five years down the road. If we, six months from now, have a parcel of land that's, that's acceptable, we're going to attack East Milton as soon as we can. I mean, and, and again, it, here's what we do know.
Yeah, if there is, if there is.
Here's what we do know. It will not be on site at East Milton, so you can start construction while you're keeping public safety running.
We still have a role in that discussion.
Am I missing anything?
I would say our recommendation at this point was that it wouldn't be on the present site as presently constituted. If we were, we have evaluated the potential of one lot next door, one lot doesn't make it big enough, but if a couple of adjacent lots or other adjacent lots in that area would work, that would be our recommendation.
I, I guess I'm just suggesting, I think that's something we need to keep the dialogue going and you're obviously a moderator appointed committee under the authority of town meeting. Fire department's under the Board of Selectmen through the town administrator. The municipal land over here is under the control of the selectmen, so I think we need to keep that dialogue going, especially in terms of East Milton and the headquarters. Because I think Atherton Street is, is less of a mystery.
It is, it's less.
And absolutely, and remember, and again, I came to your committee and asked for a liaison specifically for, I, we, we absolutely recognize the synergy has got to be an ongoing synergy with the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, and we don't, and we want to keep the master plan implementation committee for the headquarters in the mix. That's all I'm suggesting.
I follow all that. I agree with all of them.
If I could just make a suggestion for town meeting?
No.
For town meeting, because, because frankly, the, the graphs here with all three being built at once, and, and I know you were setting out as worst case scenario and I didn't get that because I wasn't at the presentation, but for town meeting, you might want to lay out a likely scenario.
It won't be presented that way. That was for the capital improvement planning committee only.
Fair enough, fair enough. That's very helpful.
Go ahead.
Way in with one thing. You know, again, what, you know, what Dan is talking about, the, the design, no matter, no matter where it goes, the design is basically going to be the same. You know, the design is the design. The construction costs may vary depending upon where that building goes. You know, if it's a gut rehab out here, then it's, it's probably got to be more expensive than, you know, than.
A brand new building.
Than a brand new building. They generally are. You know, if you have land problems, you know, maybe more, but those are all construction costs, not design costs. To Katie's point, you know, this, this town is in, in need of a lot of municipal space that we currently don't have, anywhere from, you know, potentially schools down the line to a youth center, to, you know, to consolidated facilities. I mean, you know, we have, we have, so to the extent we can, we can keep and repurpose any of the municipal buildings we already have, I think is a good idea and, and you're right, that is a planning issue, that's not a fire building committee issue, but clearly they come in, they, they have to come together and there has to be a meeting of minds in terms of where you're going to go with all of this. And the other thing I might add, and, and we, we talked a little bit about it on the capital committee, that, you know, because two of these buildings, I, I believe are historic, I believe Atherton Street is, and I, and I believe Central is.
East of Central.
Partially, that there may be a unique opportunity for private, public partnership to be able to utilize historic rehab credits, keep a land lease perhaps on the land so you don't lose control of the land because you don't get credits on the land anyways. And, and then just do a sale leaseback kind of transaction where you might have a, a 99-year lease on the property and, and still control of the land, but perhaps get some cash flow in the, in the door from the sale of the property to, you know, either, either pay back the lease cost or, or to use for other projects. So, and that's certainly something that, and I'm not going to be around to explore it, but somebody should.
You may be advising the private developer.
I think he's going to be, he's, he's already advised for life.
About the fees and the design fee is, the selection process is qualifications based. When we select an OPM or a designer and then you negotiate the contract. So the committee has in mind what we think is fair for these fees, but it, it's a negotiated process. So it's not that just because we have that number in there that we're going to necessarily, that's the 100% the number that we're going to end up with. You know, it could be less, it could be right out of that number. So I just don't, I don't want people to think that just because they see 2.7 total design fee doesn't mean that that's 100% of what we're going to spend. It could be less, depending on how it gets negotiated.
And the actual payment will be staged over time. I mean, it's not going to, it's not going to.
February 28th.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to figure out.
One, one, one comment called us an ad, called us an important perspective on my part. Chairman Wells has mentioned that you've got a, the time is now and for lots of reasons. I want to share with you, the time is now because you've got an incredibly talented building committee. The town has benefited enormously from free services, from the skills that are on there. You've, you've listened to Dan, clearly you can tell your opinion there. We have two other architects. We've done a deep dive study on East Milton by one member of the committee that the town would have paid a lot of money for. Mr. Collins has gone out and used his firm to do a professional analysis of the value of the East Milton Station to the town. You have a committee that's fully engaged, that's fully moving ahead and it's exceptionally talented. As moderator for 14 years, I got to see a lot of committees. I got to a point. You've got a really good one here and you've got the momentum. And I just add that, the time is now.
Okay.
Add one more thing, just because you touched on it earlier, I forgot.
What did I do? I'm trying to keep him awake.
So this raises his hand.
Go ahead.
Is your comment about maintenance and stuff like that on there is, you know, a lot of these buildings, we have to be careful too because if, if the building code stipulates that depending on how much work you do and how much you spend on the building versus what its appraised value is, could trigger the ADA upgrades and things like that. So it's something that we have to be careful about in terms of when we consider some of these buildings that, you know, good examples, East Milton right now is, you know, small, but it's missing a lot of the ADA requirements. It's missing a lot of building codes. We know we would trigger the requirement for building code to bring it up to all the current building codes such as, you know, needing the elevator, the second form of egress, the corridors are not wide enough, the stairs are not big enough. You know, there's, there's a host and litany of problems that, that's why rehabbing that building specifically, it's currently, you know, roughly 30, 200 square feet of a building. Just to bring it up to code, you're going to be up at like 4,500. There's no way to, you can physically do that in that building. So that, that was one of the big reasons why we, we're trying to really evaluate other sites and locations for East Milton.
Okay, Tom?
If you want to just talk briefly, and, and I know your time is valuable, so I'm, you just hand these out. This is the, this is the redesigned Article 37 cash flow analysis, if you will. And basically what I did with this thing, do I have enough for everybody?
I'm all right. I might already have it. I might have it from the meeting this morning. Don't worry, I'm good. I've worked with so many numbers in the last two days that.
Okay. So in, in any event, what, what I did was, this analysis is based upon 28-year life bonds as opposed to 30, so a little more realistic, 4% interest. And just briefly how this works, if you look at the, the first column, that 2.3 million is the current debt service on what our, is left on the school building and, and the library. So at 2019, 2.3 million will be the debt service payment on that. This model basically says, okay, to, to the extent that debt service falls below that level, let us take the difference and put it into a stabilization fund. So you can see the next year, 2020, you know, we have no projects yet other than that. So in 2020, the debt service is 2.258 million, there's about 77 grand that can go into the stabilization fund and the taxpayers still get billed 2.3 million. So taxpayers get billed 2.3 million all the way down the road until you stop winding this thing down. Based upon the analysis, and, and the key is that blue column to the, to the far right is to make sure that never goes negative. So it's kind of trial and error. So based upon trial and error, I was able to plug $7 million into 2022. So we could bond $7 million in 2022 and not drive that thing negative based upon the 4% 20. The next possible year I could go out and bond would be 2025 for 2.6. If I did it any sooner, I'm going to drive that blue column negative in some of those years. So, and, and then 2026, I'd be able to do another 10.5 and still keep it. So by, by 2026, you'd pretty much get all of those stations. If you get the gift, then obviously a lot quicker, you, you know, you'd probably, you'd need the seven and, you know, maybe the 2.6. So now the, the other thing that this doesn't take into account too is, you know, typically when we sell bonds, we, we get a bond premium so that, and you can now use that bond premium to reduce the current project cost. So in other words, you would rather than, rather than bonding seven in that particular year, you know, if there's a $300,000 bond, you might only, you know, bond, you know, 6.7.
6.7.
Yeah, 7. And you'd use the 300,000 in the project. So there's that opportunity which makes this work a little better. You know, the other thing that would make it quicker is any kind of money that might fall out of the sky that you could, because this stabilization fund doesn't have to be funded just with its savings. It could be funded with any money. It's, it's a stabilization fund. So to the extent that there's, you know, something falls out of the sky, just like any other stabilization fund, you could appropriate it into, into this one and, and use it to perhaps get, but, but in essence, what I did here is, I was able to get about $48 million by the time I probably will be long dead, because I think it's 2045. But, but you, you can do it and then you, you know, start winding it down after that point. If you look at the second page, you kind of see where the last time I'm going to need stabilization money is 2048. You know, if you, if you did the whole DPW and, and did it for $48 million.
Quick question, just one quick question. And the idea, hopefully I can get the gift, the drawers that you're talking about, as time's moving on, I, I think this is going to take, this is, you know, Wolf's talking about, this is the biggest project moved down in town since the schools. This is, and I think it's going to take a while to hash out what the DPW is going to become. Could you, if it became available, start parking some money from this? If you had, you could do it if you had a project.
I think we can do it with or without a project and that's, that's something we've talked to town council about and kind of gone back and forth, that, you know, do we need a project or, or, you know, as long as the, as long as the referendum is favorable, passes, basically that's what the, that's what the special legislation does is allows us to park money in that stabilization fund for the potential building of those two projects. You know, it's, it really is key, I mean, you know, this doesn't work obviously as well if we don't, you know, because we started, you know, two or three years later than we expected to. You know, without that gift, it's going to be much more difficult. And if, and if we don't get, you know, if, if the voters decide that they don't like this idea, it's pretty clear that, you know, with or without the gift, you're not going to, you're not going to put $10 million bonded or otherwise under the levy limit. It's just not going to happen. It's going to be a debt exclusion.
Right, right.
Now, the only other thing I want to add is, again, you know, I did this, I'm not, I'm not a financial analyst, you know, I'm an accountant. And at some point pretty soon, it wouldn't be a bad idea to get somebody either from a bond.
Unibank?
Unibank.
Yeah, from Unibank. To really hone in on this thing and make sure that, I don't know if 4% is reasonable and obviously, you know, nobody, nobody really does, but, but are my assumptions good? You know, are there any flaws in this thing? You know, and, and, and somebody's have to maintain this going forward to, to make sure that if it does pass, that that column never does go negative.
Right. I agree, because it's critical.
Right. If it goes negative, then it's coming out of the, it's coming out of the general.
And that's where, going back to Katie's point, the 600, I mean, granted, we were able to park it and cap stage just as a, like a, a life ring, a life net, you wouldn't be able to do it there. You'd have to actually take it. You'd have, whatever you could find, you'd have to take it to get you back out of the red.
Yeah, out of the red.
And that affects, as you say, all the operations or everything else.
Yep.
It affects everything else that comes before us. Well, I will say this to you. First, I never thought I'd be sitting here and you're sitting there and you didn't either, but.
I contemplated it at some period.
Yeah, I did. So, but I will say this to you, in understanding the challenges that we face, in, in, anyway, just to sit at any capital committee and look at the pressure that's on this town from all our departments, every, it's over 100, it's over $100 million in distant requests. It's, without this, I don't know if we could do it, Tom. I just don't, I, this is truly, and I've said this and we'll have to continue to say this and print it on a flag and fly it, this gives us a way to enhance fire public safety, specifically fire operations in the town of Milton, the 21st century, without truly having a negative impact on our residents. And you don't often get to do that. And you don't often get to do that.
Right.
And you get to do that even more so, you don't wave two flags if you get the gift, but either way, this, this, this is the last thing, but my position is, I think we need to do this now. And I agree with my, all my colleagues, the community, the two of you on the capitals committee, and the fire station building committee, that to get to answer all the things, Michael's questions, to get to answer all of these, as well as getting this done, we have to take this step. And I thank you both for all of you referencing this, all of you, because it is, it's an awful lot of work, and if you don't understand it, if you don't live it, sometimes you don't really understand it, but you've all done a great job with this to get us to where we are so far. So I think our leadership at this point has to be to keep it going forward and to carry the ball from here. So open up to any other comments, questions? Amy?
Just to have everybody understand what the discussion about the free cash...
Or parking at cap stabilization. So the only thing I do think is if we get this and it goes, we can take it back, we can take it back out at some point, take it out and put it back...
We can use it for something else.
We can use it for something else. I won't tell Katie that, because I know Katie, I know Katie has affordable housing stuff. How's he trusting her, Mike?
We first discussed maybe taking free cash and funding a portion of this and only authorizing 2.1, or 2 million for bonds. And then Tom brought up a great point that if you do that...
You lose 600 free cash you could use for something else.
Right, so, and the thought behind that was design costs without a project is a five-year bond term. So there's, by doing that, we thought we could, maybe that was something we could consider, but if you don't do that and the full project gets approved, then you can bond the 2.7 over the 30 years. So why would you want to tie up the free cash for that? So Tom made a great suggestion, and that was, why don't we take that money instead of saying we're going to pay for a portion of the design cost, let's put it in the capital stabilization fund. In the event that everything goes forward as requested by the fire station building committee with the construction, then we won't need to use that free cash to offset any of the debt, right? Then that's there to maybe fund something else. We could still use it if everybody, you know, the powers to be say, we want to, instead of, you know, we need to supplement some of the bonding with that, or it could free it up to be used for the next big project or some equipment or whatever. So it's kind of a way of giving us a little safety in that, that it's there, but not committing it to the design, architecture, and OPM only, and then it's done.
So just, pardon me, I just want to kind of regurgitate that. Tell me if I have this straight. So a design cost without a capital project, you can only bond over five years, but if you include a capital project, you're allowed to bond it over 30.
Yes.
So you have five years.
Oh, it's the life of the capital project. It could be 50.
But, you know, the intent of the capital committee is something, a project of this nature nationalizes generally 25 years, so if we were to go to the 30, it would require a vote of the trust board to approve the longer life. We could still then bond it less than that if we decided to, but then that would give us the ability to use 96,000 of the premium issued in August, which can only be used for a 30-year term project, which is a whole nother discussion. But that's part of the 30 years is we're recognizing that we're probably going to have to take short-term notes along the way, so if you only do 25, now that bond's 23, 22. If you do 30, when you go to actually issue the long-term bonds, you're going to be closer to the 25 that you initially intended. So that was kind of the thought process, great idea, as soon as Tom suggested it, the committee was all on board with that, yeah, like, that makes sense.
Amy, when would you bond the 2.7?
Well, the next time that we would be looking to issue bonds, if there was a large enough issue, would be August of 2020, which the majority of the principal wouldn't hit until fiscal '21.
Right.
We'd pay some interest. But with that being said, discussions that the capital committee has had about other things on the list is we're really looking at things of a must-have nature, knowing that we don't want to kind of go overboard with other stuff like equipment and whatnot, knowing the importance of this project and some other needs that have been discussed for the schools and whatnot.
And again, if we're going to bond the 2.7, we need a capital project. If we don't have a capital project, we're not going to bond it. First of all, it won't be 2.7, it's going to be something less, and we're going to use other sources to pay off that note. But if we do get the capital project, then one of two things happens, well, one of three things, a gift, Article 37 passes, or debt exclusion passes. And in all three scenarios, the cost of that 2.7 million in bonding is going to be paid from those sources.
It gets absorbed into those.
Might there be short-term notes along the way?
Probably will be, yeah.
Yes.
But again, you know...
Before August 2020?
Yes, so there will have to be. So even if, even if it's...
You roll those into the bond.
Right.
Right, yeah, she can.
That's why you can take the short-term notes, the short money.
Yep, sorry.
Yep.
Okay.
So even if it was the, just what they need from February to fall, you would still be looking at a short-term note at the end of this fiscal year, because you, you don't want to end with a deficit, because then that affects free cash. So you would do a six-week, two-month, whatever note at the end of the year, just to get through June 30th, and then by fall, hopefully, a lot of these kind of unknowns that everyone's been talking about will have more of a definitive answer, or maybe that construction cost, they'll have a better idea of what the true construction cost is, because now they know what the design is. So it's kind of like what comes first, right? The chicken or the egg? You don't really have a true design cost. Without the design, how can you go to fall town, meaning knowing exactly, a better estimate of what it's going to cost? So I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, what's in there right now could come down.
Yeah, part of that is the OPM doesn't estimate, the architect doesn't estimate, so you have two different estimates, it's called a firm estimate, so you really start to think of construction costs better.
All right, we're gonna, it's getting, so I'm gonna, are we good? Is everybody good? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work, all of you.
Thanks for coming in, Tom.
When the face, thank you for coming in, thank you for your patience.
You know, it's interesting, the Warren Committee got rid of its candy, you got it.
I know, I don't know, ZDA's, that came from the ZDA last night.
Oh. Ms. McCullough.
Oh, really? Jen, oh!
It's what's...
Do I vote? I don't think they're voting tonight, it was just the discussion.
Raise your hand, don't be shy over there. Madam Chair, we're ready. Where am I going? I don't even know where, lost my place, because I was doing this...
Chris, Brian.
Tom, original?
This isn't 12, is this 13?
Good evening, good evening.
No, we didn't do 13 and 15.
So this is 13.
13 and 15, we have to go back to...
13 and 15, so 15 is, right, so 13 or 15?
That's May and February articles, discussion.
Are we going to reopen again, John? Does John? We have to reopen again for, we do, that's what I thought. I don't, which one is it? That's what I thought, I thought, I don't...
15.
It's 15.
It is 15, so it's just in discussion approval of the autonomy. I'm like, it's like, weird.
Do you need Katie back?
Huh? Katie, you want to come back?
Yes.
We worked it out, you got whatever you wanted. Be here tomorrow, one package.
Richard, I'm sorry, a question you just asked me.
I asked you what article we were at. Do we have to reopen again for the planning board? We don't.
No, if I understand your previous vote...
Well, we did, that was it, that's what I thought, okay, so we're good. Okay.
Now you're going to discuss the articles, right?
Correct.
Yes, so that's what you have for, I just want to make, because for all public disclosure, we had talked and part of the discussion was to wait until you came here and not, and do the vote after you get here, so we have to, that's what it's, I'm just crossing that team.
The planning board met at 7:00 tonight, that's why we wanted you to wait.
Okay. So you, before, you had already voted, I get it. Okay.
Yeah, the, the timing with holidays and trying to get agendas posted and get meetings and things discussed is challenging, but would you like us to start?
I'm going to try to do something first. Of the six of these, are there any of these that we're okay with? We can just quickly, no, any that, no, no one has any comment on it?
We have number 13.
You're on 13, I'm sorry.
15.
15.
15.
We'll do the February one first, Mr. Chair?
Okay, and then come back with 13, I guess, okay. Okay, so on 15, setbacks, traffic mitigation, okay. You might as well start, Cheryl, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for reopening the warrant.
You're welcome.
And thank you for considering two planning board articles at a special town meeting. This one broadened a little bit after town council, John Flynn and I discussed the article, and part of it had to do with confusion about the final language that was voted at the May 2017 town meeting, because there was, there were, you probably recall, there were changes made on the floor of town meeting when that was passed, and it seems that there was a sentence that was removed that had been in the article when it was originally submitted. So that was one of the things to take care of, because as we've been reviewing the application for, we'll cut wood, so that has come in under this bylaw, some questions have come up. So as that application is well underway in terms of review, it seemed timely that we try and address these and not wait for...
Either the fall or the spring or the fall.
The spring or the fall, okay? So thank you for accommodating us on that. So the other one we had to do, so that, the sentence that I referred to having come out and really wanting to put back in is the last sentence about no building in a great estate PUD, the height, okay? So right now, there's no provision limiting the height in the bylaw, yeah. So we felt that was important. The other one is, has to do with basically contradictory requirements in this paragraph. So saying that no new roadway can be less than 125 feet from a side lot line and 50 feet from a rear lot line, so that seems to imply that you can build a roadway 50 feet from the rear property line, but then you get down further and it says there shall be a 75-feet-wide no disturbance zone. So this was something that, when the 50 feet was written and all of these provisions were written into that bylaw, it was, as you probably recall, there was a preliminary site plan around which the zoning was designed in part, because it wanted to limit, you know, where the construction could go. So this contradictory language would be not allowing that site plan to go forward in that particular manner. So this would take away the sort of conflict and pick one, and it picks the 50 feet, which is what the plan had been based on. So those are the changes, and those are the reasons why. And the 550, well, I didn't talk about that, because that was part of what we had submitted before, but the third piece of this, which was the first piece of this, has to do with the provision, let's see, let me find it on here, where...
No new townhouse unit shall be constructed less than 550 feet from the existing street providing frontage for the project.
So those words, providing frontage for the project was the intent, and there is another street that doesn't provide frontage.
Coward.
And so that would have, again...
We become part of it.
Become a different kind of site plan. So, yeah, so thank you, those are the three changes, and they're all in that same paragraph.
Go home.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we good, are we good on fire station building? Any more questions on that? Are we good? Okay. Transfer the Kitter Branch Library.
We're going to take a vote to submit this as an article?
Well, no, it's like, it's going as an article, whether or not we support it, am I right? Are we submitting, no?
No, it's whether we want to include them in the warrant.
It is inclusion of the warrant, you're right.
With the idea being, we wanted to try to limit it to one night, if possible, for the sake of the Warren Committee. Is there a prime budget?
What do you think? I know they're desperate to get this, they've already tried, am I just, has the Warren Committee voted yet? Do we know if the Warren Committee voted yes or no? Thank you, Cheryl, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Did the Warren Committee vote?
They met Monday night, I'm not sure.
Vote on what? They don't, I mean, we're...
Whether they support it or not.
Which article?
The library. There were a lot of questions.
Technically, we're including the articles tonight.
I think this is how we're back, I think it's how we wound up back here, if I believe, am I right, Cheryl, at the general town meeting, I thought the Warren Committee voted against it. They recommended a no vote, and that's part of how, the reason Tom Meeting rejected it and why we're back here. So, with 7 to 5 vote.
I don't think Tom Meeting rejected it, didn't, how...
They voted no, yeah, they voted no.
The Warren Committee sent it back.
The Warren Committee was asked to weigh in.
It's the Warren Committee, but Tom Meeting didn't vote.
Right, Tom Meeting, it didn't get there, yeah.
Right, yeah.
All right, so it didn't even get there, all right, so, so, do we know where they are this time?
7 to 5.
To send it forward or not?
Send it forward.
Okay.
They're going to list their reasons why they don't like it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do we, anyone have any questions on it, or do you want to send it forward?
I think, well...
Go ahead.
I think that one should go forward. The two that I was questioning were the planning board articles, but having talked with Cheryl, I think I understand that...
I get it, too, I understand that is wrong.
Why they want them to be submitted, I'm just hoping the traffic impact mitigation won't take a very long time.
Right, maybe you could explain that to me then, why that needs to go.
Cheryl would be the one to explain it.
Okay.
But I know they're trying to get current projects included in the mitigation.
Okay, so that's going. Application of the bond premium, that's the 682,000, we need to do that to be able to touch that money.
Mm-hmm.
And then authorize the moderator to appoint a school building committee, and I've listened to Kevin, there's no money, it's just they want to start the committee, they want to get it in place now, I'm...
The fact they had withdrawn this from the February meeting...
Brought it back, they were going to, and then they brought it back, because this issue is becoming that pressing to them, they, he actually came to the Capitol last week on it, and I've listened to him at length, we talked to Glenn as well, Michael, I think, they just want the approval to start the committee, that's what they want to do, so they can work through the summer, have something ready for our committee. I will say, my belief is, and listening to Dr. Darney and talking to the superintendent and the assistant Glenn, is that looking at these numbers, they are going to come and look, they're going to be looking for some major capital project. I mean, I saw you say on the paper, there's all kinds of, two of them, to your committee, traffic mitigation, Jeff Glava, Akali Carconnyham, the pressure that they take daily now, you do anything there, it's going to be, it's going to be hard, very hard to do. Okay, any of the others, and just in so much of time, does anyone have any concerns on any of the other articles, or are we going to move them forward?
If your question is, do I support all six of these articles to include on the warrant, the answer is yes, with the exception of article, or, excuse me, with item number two, the transfer of the Kitter Branch Library, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay. I mean, I have my, and especially in light of the conversation we had tonight, like, I'd love to...
Well, we can just vote a position on it at a later date, right now, we're just including it.
And I understand, no, I understand the distinction, but, and I understand that my vote is probably symbolic, but I really am not in favor of selling off town-owned assets, particularly in the environment that we're in now, where there are discussions about a potential youth center and a potential elementary school and overflow and so on and so forth. I fully understand the drawbacks currently to keeping this on the books, for lack of a better term. I remember the trustee's presentation, Kristen Hodlin, John Folkorelli, I get it. And in the short term, it makes sense to offload this and reduce the liability. But I, what I would hate to have happen is, down the road, we need this space for something and we don't have it. And just generally, as a general rule, I'm not in favor of selling off town assets, there are exceptions to that rule. To me, this is one where I just like to keep, I like to hold on to it. I understand that my vote's probably symbolic, but I just, given the fact that I don't support it, I'm just, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to vote in opposition to including it on the warrant.
I agree with you, and I've had the same, I mean, I've gone back and forth, unfortunately, we don't have, it's not ours, it's not, it's like Katie talks about, it's not under our jurisdiction. To me, my own thought is, we're under our jurisdiction, I'll be taking an approach similar to what we... to what we discussed tonight here, something in that area. To them, it's real money and they need that money to help offset their operating costs, but the fact, and I get their capital issues as well, is that, okay, so if we're not going to sell it, it's going to need A, B, C, and D, so we're going to have to throw some money at it, so that's the, that's the downside of that. But I, look, I respect, you can vote any way you want, I'm just, so, I'm just looking, we have a motion to approve the following articles for inclusion in the February 2019 special town meeting warrant.
Can we take them one by one?
Do you want to do one by one, do you want to just do that one by one?
I think that makes the most sense.
So I'll make the motion, and I'll do them one by one, if someone can second, then we can vote them, I'll make the initial motion, so I'll make a motion to approve the following articles for inclusion in the February 2019 special town meeting warrant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? The first one, fire station building committee, any discussion further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Transfer the Kidder Branch Library, any further discussion? I got, I know, I got that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Amending...
You weren't opposed, you were in favor.
No, I was, I was, yeah, I was, yeah. I just, I was just sending that I got, amended zoning by law, setbacks in high-grade estate PUD, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item four, amend the zoning bylaws, the traffic impact mitigation, any discussion?
Yes, I wish we hadn't let Cheryl go.
I'm sorry, you have plenty of time to talk though.
It's, no, I, that's on me, but...
Want me to call her back? I got her cell phone.
No, that's okay, I'll get it straightened out.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you...
No, I mean, it can, it can go in, we'll be able to discuss its merits, I just really wanted to know why right now and not May.
Okay. She did tell me, and I am so tired, I can't remember.
That's okay, since Katie said she talked to her. What she said was that they wanted to capture projects.
Yes, exactly right, they're in the process, right, yeah. Application of the bond premium, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number six, authorize the moderator to appoint a school building committee, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 16, approval of one-day gluck license. We have a motion here to approve the following one-day gluck license to Milton Club at 193 Central Ave. for January 11, 2019, for the Williams Retirement Party.
You have a second?
We have a second one as well, hold on. And also on Sunday, January 27, 2019, for the De Silva's Birthday Party. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chair, did we skip number 13?
I know I did, I got to go back to 13, that's it, okay. So this is the discussion, so this is a motion, I'll make a motion to vote to approve the following articles, this is just to get us a second and discussion, the following articles for inclusion, the May 29 annual town meeting election warrant, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now we're discussing. Anyone, article one, the vote to authorize the selectmen the contract for the management of the Ullin Rink, do we, anyone have any comment on that? We good? All those in favor?
Aye.
And article to discharge, number two, to discharge the legislative committee, any discussion, any comments on that? And that's from the town moderator. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three, article to amend the zoning by law, so that's, we don't need that, okay?
Yeah, we weren't sure if that was going to get pushed to May.
Number four, article regarding investment of trust funds?
We already voted to submit that one.
Okay. All those in favor, I'm just going to, aye. Five, article regarding bond rescindment, any discussion?
What is that?
These are old bond authorizations that were never used.
I see.
Just going to rescind those, clean them up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article six, article regarding the bylaw review committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all. Okay, so now I'm getting to...
Seventeen.
Seventeen, I'm just moving this quick to get a, so, I have a motion here to approve and sign of January 25th and 26, 2019, special town meeting warrant, greeting page and index page, do I have a second?
Second, but I just, I noticed there was a 2018 date in there this afternoon, so we just need to fix, change the date from 2018 to 2019. No, if I can find it after the meeting.
Okay, I'll make, I'll amend that, so, subject to change, subject to those modifications, is that all right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good. Eighteen, approval of a no-place-for-hate proclamation. Each year, the board is invited by the Milton Faith Clergy to attend and participate in the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration, it takes place at West Conca Baptist Church. Our board reaffirms the participation, no-place-for-hate program sponsored by the Anti-Defamation League of New England by signing a proclamation to that effect, which I will do, Katie has also done the past, invited, and I will read that proclamation, I've signed it, I have it here. Will take this, take place this year, we're all invited on Monday, January 21st, Conca Baptist Church, 180 Buhrav, 6:30 to 8:00. Motion here to sign a proclamation reaffirming the board's support of the no-place-for-hate program for 2019 for the town of Milton, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nineteen, approval ratification of Eagle Scout letter of recognition. Motion here is for the board to ratify a letter of recognition to Nicholas Hajar of Troop 3, Milton, who was awarded as Eagle Scout on January 6, 2019, at the Quarter of Honor Ceremony. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty, boards and committees, reappointments to the signed review committee, and this is a promotion to appoint town planner William Clark, Paul Donnie of 8 Thistle Ave., Lawrence Johnson of 8 Churchill Street., Douglas Sibek of 30 Governors, Raymond Thill of 457 Elliott Street., and John Zickiewicz of 245 Atherton Street. to serve on the signed review committee through December of 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Mr. Denny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, four quick things. I want to thank this board, the Board of Assessors, and Mary Ann Sullivan for upping the senior tax work-off program. Last year, it was $750, only 16 of the 25 seats were occupied. As of today, January 9, 21 of those seats have been occupied. It's very, very nice to see Jean Clements, June Elam, Moores, Harriet Manning, back downstairs, and other people that have signed up this year for that $1,500 stipend, which we all know comes in handy for, for many in our town, so. Anybody who's watching that may be interested and might think they qualify should call Mary Ann Sullivan at the Council on Aging at 617-898-4892, and I would advise them to do that quickly. Great program, thank you to this board for doubling that money to 1,500. Milton Yacht Club inspection took place, thank you, Selectwoman Conlon for...
Thank you, John.
...reinvigorating that on January 2. Private firm came in and walked the site with Bill Ritchie. Follow-up from that was today, Mr. Ritchie walked the site with a roof expert, a copper and slate roof expert, so that progress is undergoing. I know this board is in the process of generating a letter to possibly get the yacht club on a historic register in Massachusetts, so a lot of work being done down there to try to salvage that building and make sure that it lasts through the winters and years to come. Christmas tree recycling, obviously, today has already happened, but tomorrow is the one and only day for the Thursday collection route. We just ask that you strip your Christmas tree of all ornaments, bags, tinsel, and everything, so they can be properly repurposed and not put into the solid waste stream. Lastly, the electric vehicle charging station, Selectman Barrington, is finally operating, operating well, actually, and our two Nissan Lees arrived last Friday. Funny, so we are looking to do a ribbon cutting next Wednesday at 10:30, and I reached out to Darrell Warner yesterday, let him know about it, and he was actually charging his vehicle downstairs and walked upstairs, and we coordinated. So there's a pretty large group coming next week, representatives from the Mass Department of Energy Resources.
It's going to be a blizzard.
Don't say that.
No, I'm not kidding.
Department of Energy, Environment, Affairs, Power Options, who gave us the grant for the ChargePoint electric vehicle charging station, Eversource, town and Milton team, and a sizable group from Sustainable Milton, so any of you folks that can be there, it's going to be next Wednesday at 10:30 a.m.
Good?
Good.
Good. Twenty-two, me, it's your birthday, we're taking you out for a drink right now, got it all set up, so that's all I'm saying. Any other members, anybody have anything?
I'd just like to reiterate, congratulations again to Ned Hauser and the Hauser family, they're a proud BC High student, and also as a former BC High student myself and a Troop 3 alum, I give them real credit, it's quite an accomplishment. I never made it past star as a junior, he's got up the eagle, so best wishes to him, and also congratulations to, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their cooperation on this National Grid effort that we put forth, I think that we did a job, a great job, I don't know if it really had a real impact, but it is over, the lockout is over, so congratulations to both the unions as well as National Grid on working together to end that, and hopefully we can get back to, back to business, business as usual.
Anybody else?
It's probably not too late to get your Eagle Scout, you could probably go back and still try to get it.
Can we, we all go to future agenda items, can we, anything that we need to do tonight?
I would like to also thank Nick Hajar, not congratulate Nick Hajar, it's getting late, it was a very nice ceremony for him that several of us were able to go to, and he deserves a lot of credit.
He does.
Eagle Scout achievement is...
Carries with you for your whole life.
Yeah.
I was at a funeral for a...
It's something to be very proud of.
World War II veteran on, a father of one of our police officers on, he's a career veteran, Sunday, and his grandson was there, and he'd recently been a, I call promoted to eagle, made eagle, and at the funeral, he had his proudly had his Eagle Scout badge on his suit, it's a pallbearer, so that was very, I've always said, the two things in